I'd like to call the meeting to order. If we could have a moment of silence? Excellent. In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, a public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, The Herald News, The Suburban Trends, The Record, The Messenger, Westmalfit Town Hall, The County Superintendent's Office, the Board Attorney, Cablevision of Warwick, and Westmalfit TV 77, and posted in the Administration Building. Copies of the board meeting calendar resolution were provided to all local media, Town Hall, Township Library, and all district schools. Roll call, please, Mr. Schultz.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer? Mrs. Draggensen?
Here.
Mr. Lippie?
Here.
Mrs. Markward? Mrs. Romeo?
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Here.
Mrs. Rakana?
Here.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Here.
Dr. Fenari, your interim superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Lockwood. Good evening, everyone. This evening, we have the distinct pleasure of having one of our students, Colby Scott, will be coming to the microphone to share his Eagle Scout project proposal with us. So, Colby.
Hello. My name is Colby Scott. Hi, my name is Colby Scott. I am a junior in Westmalford High School. And I'm with the Boy Scout troop 159. I'm a Life rank, and I'm working on my Eagle. I have some papers. So as I was going along, I just want to say thank you to Dr. Fenari, the superintendent, for allowing me to be here, as well as the Board of Education for allowing me to be here as well. I also like to thank, not here, but Mr. Strians, the of the Westmalford High School, and obviously the guidance of my scoutmaster, Mr. Solusha. So, I am a Life Scout. My name is Colby Scott, and I'm working on my Eagle project. And on my Eagle project, I want it to be, within the school district, obviously, that's why I'm here. And my idea is I want to create signage and a seating area in front of Killgallen. And within the workbook, there should be, at the very end, there should be pictures of like roughly where it is. It's near Nissenzo Pond Road. And yeah, so it, there's gonna be three signs in total. One near the road, double-sided, and that's just gonna say, you know, the usual, "Welcome to Killgallen Field." And then two more up by the walkway, saying, one for Westmalford Baseball and one for Westmalford Field Hockey. I just want to commemorate like the teams that play here because the main issue with Killgallen is that it's like kind of hidden, and there's a lot of team, visiting teams, and parents that have trouble trying to find the field. So I just wanted to make sure that that is in order and that everyone can find it. And also, scouting has been a huge part of my life as I've been in it for the past 11 years since I was in first grade, and baseball has been a huge part of my life as I've been in it since minors, so since I was like, I am first grade as well. So I was thinking that since I am in scouting, I'm in baseball, why not just combine the both for the biggest project, Eagle? So that's where I came up with the idea of creating signage and a little seating area for Killgallen. So as you're, as you're looking through, it just says the prices, it says the supplies I need, the materials, what else? Just the project idea as it, as it's written down. So is there any, any questions about the project idea?
Where, where, where is, where is the seating?
Yeah, so the seating, so it's kind of hard to, if you look at the picture, you have Nissenzo Pond Road, and then you have the driveway going up to the parking lot. And then, as you can tell, there's like a little like pathway, it's kind of hidden within the trees, but a pathway going down to the field.
I know where the, how to get to the field path, yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So where would the seating go?
It would be right to the left of the entrance.
Oh.
Right there. Yeah, so I'm still trying to work out what would be best if I should do like pea gravel or pavers, but my main intention is to do pavers, just so it's handicap accessible. But yeah, it's gonna be two picnic tables up there, just for, because I, whenever I'm up there, obviously, I play baseball, so I always, I obviously noticed this. There's always kids like waiting to get a ride, and they're always just like standing out there, so I was thinking, maybe just adding the picnic benches can be like a little like help with that. But yeah, it's, it'll be to the left of the entryway.
This was a, was a good idea, I'll give you that much. The signs, you're gonna make the signs, how, how big are the signs gonna be?
Oh, yeah, so on the, alright, so my, the one near the road is gonna be made out of metal, actually, all of them will be made out of metal, but it's gonna be a plywood backing, and then like metal sign on it stating Killgallen, the ones near the entryway, the two near the entryway stating Westmalford Baseball, Westmalford Field Hockey.
The, putting in pavers, that's a big project depending on how large of an area you plan on, that would require sand as well, and things like that. My guess is it would be quite a bit more than what you have here in your budget. How big of an area do you want to put to pea gravel or into the pavers in?
I think I have it in there, or maybe it's in my notes here. It was 21 feet by 20 feet is the...
So, so a patio, basically?
Sorry, 12 by 20, 12 by 20.
Okay, so a patio, not the whole walkway you were talking about?
Yeah, 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 no, just like to the side of patio. Yeah, I do understand that the pavers would be like a big budget increase, but I was just thinking for, it would be easier work handicapped.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah, I hope, but yeah.
I don't have a question, I just want to say this is awesome, and thank you. And I feel like you've really hit on some of the biggest things, so being a baseball player, being down there every day, you know. I did see some audience members too saying like, "Yeah, you know, so this is really great, and a job. Please just make sure that you email the board if there's like a way of funding and things, because sometimes people like to donate." So if you have a, I guess, how are you doing that, too? Will you have a GoFundMe beach and?
Yeah, so I'll have multiple like funding options, if there's any like funny donations within my church, just the school, my scouts, like if, any donations would be amazing. And then we can also do like, I want to say like charities, but like, there was an idea, oh, fundraisers, where my baseball team or the field hockey team, they can do like a car wash or something, just to bring up some more money. But yeah, maybe even a GoFundMe as like a little charity on top, but I'm not like relying on that, I'm mostly relying on like the fundraising within, like in-person fundraising.
Good for you, this is great, thank you.
So, Colby, I know that you had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Strians and I think Mr. Glenn also, our facilities director. How did that meeting go?
Oh, it went, it went perfect, yeah. The pictures there was actually the pictures I presented to them, and it was just a nice, simple meeting in the office. And we actually went down to the field, and the facilities director, Mr. Glenn, he looked over everything, seeing like, "Oh, this might not work, this might not work," but I mean, everything seemed perfectly fine. The only issue was when it snows, plowing, I don't want it to, what he said, that it might push into the seating area, but that can just be simply fixed with like a couple of like the orange posts you can put.
Yeah. You know, it was great that you took that initiative, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Fantastic.
Oh, yes. First of all, congratulations on getting to this step. It's very difficult, and I've seen it time and time again, where sometimes scouts get hung up on this step, so keep it up. Couple of things I want to note, with the, which, with each section in the proposal, there's an italicized statement next to it that just kind of gives you kind of a little bit of an example of what you would include in that section. If you could take a look at those things, it's gonna help you flesh it out before it gets presented to council, and that's gonna really allow you to kind of think about how you justify the project fundraising part of that. But other than that, this is a great idea, and I look forward to it.
Alright, thank you, thank you.
Yes. Alright, thanks so much.
Thank you, thank you. And any other questions?
Great job. Thanks, John. Okay. Alright, so next, I'd like to invite our representative from Student Body to give her report.
Hello, so we've been really busy at the high school since the last board event meeting. The Leap Year Spirit Winter Pep Rally and Unified Basketball Game was held on February 29th, which was a great event for the entire Highlander community. Congrats to the Unified Basketball Team for their incredible win. This was tied into Sphere Week with Neon Day, Tie-Dye Day, Comfy Pajama Day, Black and Gold Day, and then Wear Orange Day for the color of inclusion. There was another Spirit Week to celebrate International Women's Day, where students wore comfy clothes, sportswear, pink and red for women's health, ball attire, and Westmalford Women's Equality and Power Make Club gear. They also collected feminine hygiene products for women and girls in need. Freshman class officers were announced, congrats to all who were elected. Student Council is seeking acts for senior choice awards to be held in the spring. We need singers, dancers, magicians, comedians, bands, and just about any performers, welcome. Please see Ms. Petrosillo or Ms. Larray to sign up to perform. Interact hosted the annual Cinderella Project on Saturday, March 2nd. This featured gently-used prom dresses at lower cost, with 82 dresses being sold along with jewelry and hair accessories for a total of $848. This financially assisted students to have the opportunity to attend prom. This year's spring musical was Footloose, the drama based on the 1984 movie, follows a teenage boy who moves from Chicago to the fictional town of Beaumont, Utah. The musical went from Thursday, March 7th through Sunday, March 10th. The show also hit the records for ticket sales, with almost every show being sold out. Tribune Night was last Friday, March 15th, and was open to all students, staff, and community members. The event was a huge success, with over 80 people attending. Congratulations to all the winners, and good luck next year. The annual All District Arts Festival will be held on March 27th. This event will feature the bands of all elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools, along with the performance from the Highlander Pipes and Drums. Visual arts, photography, and woodshop students will be hosting an exhibit to feature their favorite pieces. The sculpture and culinary students will be joining together to present Empty Bowls fundraiser. The W, the Westmalford High School PTSO will be serving hot dogs, hot pretzels, snacks, and drinks. Come show your support for all involved. Junior Prom will be held on March 28th. Tickets were on sale the last week of February, hope you got them. National Honor Society Eligibility Letters went out to juniors, seniors, and who meet the requirements, requirements, application materials are due by March 29th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that concludes the superintendent's report for the evening.
Thank you, Dr. Fenari. Mr. Novak, your education report.
Yes, good evening. I have two items. First, I want to discuss is our, provide an update on our process for our kindergarten through fifth grade ELA replacement, and lead into, you know, when I first put this on the agenda, when we were doing agenda review last week, you know, it was, we thought it was a good time to talk about the replacement process, and that was prior to the knowledge that we were gonna have a in-carry motion for, for discussion tonight. That'll be part of, of what I discussed tonight, is how we, how we got to the point of looking at programs to, to review, and then to why there's a in-carry motion here tonight that I, I discussed with Lydia last week, Dr. Fenari, last week, and made sure it was included in her weekly update. But I'll, I'll be able to get it to that. And if, I'm gonna do a lot of talking, I'm gonna talk about a process that's been going on for probably a good part of two years, so if you have any questions, feel free to, feel free to let me know. So this, I've been doing an awful lot of discussion over the last year about our math replacement. To provide a little background, you wouldn't typically replace, completely replace a K5 math program in one year, and then replace a K5 language arts program in the following year. That is a, I guess that's a symptom of the type of funding we're using to, to replace these programs. So as you're, as you're all aware, we are using money from our stabilization grant to replace the programs. That was when we filled out the grant last year, that was for the use of replacing our math program. And this year, when we filled out the grant, it was also down to, to replace, replace ELA. As we know, these are one-time funds, these are significant costs potentially, and are with S2, and the things that we've been, I guess, dealing with for the last seven years, complete replacements are not, not something that, you know, we believe was gonna be locally, locally budgeted anytime soon. So we've done a good job, I think, in leveraging our one-time costs with stabilization aid to complete program replacements that, in my opinion, are, were long overdue. So I'm gonna move away from math, because I've been talking about that for, for months. In the summer of 2022, when we experienced some supervisory restructuring, I took on the role of K5 supervisor for, K5 director for all of our content areas. Prior to that, we had a single-subject supervisor for all of our, all of our programs, K12, oh, sorry, K12. That summer, I led the District Literacy Committee in a discussion about the current program that we had in place, which was the school-wide, school-wide fundamentals of reading and writing. At that time, our District Literacy Committee had been the, the group that we used to review programs. They are the group who helped us bring in Phonics First, which has been, you know, tremendously successful. We leaned on that group also to add the sadly air vocabulary program, which is in grades three through five. So when we had, we had a program in schoolwide that we thought was missing components over the years. So with the District Literacy Committee, we've worked, we've visited districts, so a lot of the same process that we completed as we were looking to review math curriculum, we've done little by little over time with the District Literacy Committee. So the summer of 2022, I led a discussion, my first time working with that group, you know, together, we, we spoke about program replacement, and the desire of the district, not just the members of the literacy committee, but, you know, they, they talk in their departments, they talk in their grade levels, and there was an overwhelming, overwhelming concern at that time, that they wanted to investigate program replacement. So I, I still have the charts in my office, we, you know, we were in the library, library conference room, you know, the staff was, you know, writing all their, their ideas, their thoughts, and what they wanted from program replacement. So their goals at the time was that it was, you know, comprehensive, that it had all the, all the tools and all the, all the resources that a teacher needed to, you know, plan and, and teach everything that we need to do in, in English and Language Arts, which we didn't believe, school-wide, our current program was doing for our staff. We worked very hard, we had a literacy consultant over, over years, that was Shelley Klein Consulting, who, who came in and tried to help us fill the gaps that we saw in that, in that program, with creating our own, you know, we, we created a lot. Our staff, our teachers, created our own handwriting program, which, you know, if we could package and sell, would probably be a revenue source that Mr. Schultz would, would enjoy, because our, our staff did a tremendous job in creating our own handwriting program. And that was again with the work of the, our occupational therapists, our District Literacy Committee. So we've pieced together what we had, what we currently have. So the, the pandemic, no, actually, I wouldn't blame that, well, for, but I, I have to, because we did lose so many staff members during that time period. We hired, hired a lot of new staff. With the budget the way it was, we lost the services of District Literacy Consultant, who was helping us fill in, fill in these gaps over time. And we have a number of staff members now, probably half our staff in the elementary schools, who were not initially trained through schoolwide, who are not here when we had our literacy consultant to help fill in those gaps. And we have a program that's not easy for a new teacher to use. We have a large number of new staff, we have, you know, a gap. So that's what we talked about in that, like I said, that meeting in, in the summer of 2022, was how do we put a program in place at a new teacher, or a teacher who's changing grade level, which we have so much of, you know, especially with, you know, restructuring last year, we have people who taught their careers in fifth grade, earned a different grade, you know, just people moving from position to position. So in order for us to move forward, we, we talked about program. So we spent last year, you know, math took precedent, because, because that's what we were doing, but I did start the groundwork with the District Literacy Committee last year about what a program replacement would look like in the following year, if indeed we received funding. Mr. Schultz did a great job with helping put together the stabilization grant, which we rewarded, and then we had the, you know, we, now we've had the, now we have the, the task of moving forward and going ahead and replacing our program. So we've done all the work from that summer until now to put us in a position where we are ready to move forward and replace a program for next year. Beginning last spring, I started scheduling vendor presentations from, I guess, around, I believe it was our final of the March PD Day last year, was when we first saw our first program that was new, and then this year, we've, we've seen, we've seen a total of seven, seven different programs. Our teachers have received sample materials, they've gotten curriculum, you know, sampled teacher manuals, sample student text, they get online digital access for some of the tools that they can use, so they've had a good time for this, this whole school year, and then part some programs last year to, to try out some materials, to, you know, take a look at all the things that the programs have to offer. This, this committee's very invested, so when I bring it, when I bring a vendor in, it's like that Shark Tank show with, with all the, you know, all the questions that they have. I mean, they're, they're a very well-read group, passionate about Language Arts and, and what we do, so they've done a really good job of, of, you know, looking at the programs that were vested. About a month ago, in, along with our February Professional Development Day, we started the process of talking about narrowing it down, and, and taking a look at tiering the programs that we reviewed, and, you know, seeing where we're at, if we're ready to, to make a move, and, and discuss narrowing it down to our final three. So we did a, we did a vote, they tiered the programs, you know, one through, one through seven, you know, what were their favorites, what were their least favorites. We did a survey that asked for their pros and cons for each and every program, and I was, I may have been a little, little ambitious in what I asked them to do, because it was, it had to take them an hour to fill out the survey. I awarded a gift card for, to a, a staff member who, who made me laugh the most with some of the comments in, that they put in the survey, so it was, it was, you know, some just tremendous feedback from the staff, and they put their heart and soul into it. So we narrowed it down, we, I asked them to get, give me a top three. The top two vote-getters were so far away from the third and fourth place choices, that we decided to narrow it down to only two. I told them that those votes weren't binding, so we did have, we had a meeting last week, where we met to discuss the, these programs, you know, that was like, and I joked with one of our, one of the people on the committee who works with the place, it was like 12 Angry Jurors, with committee getting together and, you know, hashing it out and fighting over programs, and we actually did it, we did a good job with the third-place winner, we actually brought them back to the discussion, just to make sure that we were, we were right on, on our tiering for what the second program would be and what the third program would be. So at the end of that day, we, we landed on the fact that we wanted to remain with our top two, that we arrived at from voting, and we discussed a process for what we wanted to do going forward. One of the sources of feedback that I took from the math committee last year, when we did the math replacement, is that, you know, after, after we completed the process, I gave them a little exit survey, you know, if we could have done, you know, I thought we did a great job, you know, with, with what we did, but it was, you know, if we could have done something different, what would we do differently? And that will help inform Language Arts Committee this year. And the feedback from that math committee was that we didn't, we didn't commit to a pilot process. So we piloted, we had, we had sample materials, teachers used all the different resources from all the different math programs in their classrooms, whether it was replacing a two-digit by two-digit multiplication activity with, you know, the same topic but from a different company, you know, so that's how they were, they were kind of naturally embedding these resources into, into their classroom practice. So they tried out materials that they have, but we didn't do a, we didn't do a real structured pilot where a vendor came in and trained our staff on how to use it day-to-day in the classroom with the lesson planning and that sort of thing. We just tried it out. We did visit districts, we talked to teachers who used it, we did, we did a good job. That was the piece that we thought we were missing. So that was what we discussed last week, about wanting to do a structured pilot. Part of the process, and you know, Mr. Schultz is always in my ear, when I'm meeting with vendors, getting, you know, getting them to share our resources and, you know, come in and meet with our staff, I asked them for a program quote, and how much would it cost if we want to do a complete replacement, you know, what's it gonna cost us? In those discussions, I also included what would it cost for a program pilot? Some programs cost money for a pilot, and some programs are free for a pilot. One of the two programs that we selected, I thought was free, and then after I reached back out to the vendor to talk about it, the free part of the process, the free pilot would have included one staff member at grade level or district. So I would have been able to give one first-grade teacher, one kindergarten teacher, one second, third, fourth, and fifth, and a special education teacher access to a full pilot for free, but only those people. My committee alone is, is, total it's 20, and I have Dr. Schwartz and, and some of my administrative team, Mr. Kane. You know, I have administrators on the team, but the teaching staff on it is 16 alone, and a free pilot wouldn't even cover my committee. We thought it was also in our best interests to, again, feedback from the math committee was that the math committee did everything, the math committee shared out with their colleagues at grade level meetings and faculty meetings, but we didn't give access to anyone who was outside of that committee. So I talked with our, our committee about expanding the pilot beyond just the people who are on that committee, and I put out a interest survey, and I had 30 staff members who volunteered to be part of the pilot. And, I mean, that's, that's a phenomenal number, is it, you know, they're volunteering their time after school, they're volunteering to, you know, relearn something entirely, you know, and that, and I, I thought that was great, and I wanted to, I wanted to validate them for that. I didn't accept everybody who volunteered for the pilot, because we are gonna do two tiers. Magnetic is the program pilot that we're going Magnetic is the program pilot that we're going to start, or we want to start right away. We have a total of about, including our committee, I took up, I took half of the people who volunteered. We've got about 29 total staff members who want to pilot the magnetic reading program from curriculum associates initially. The other 15 volunteers, I would, I would like them to be able to pilot the second program, which is a program called, a program called Wonders. And that is a free, that's truly a free pilot. So that's called Wonders, it's called Wonders, it's from McGraw-Hill. And that program pilot is, is free, the materials that we get. As far as I know, I'm, you know, I've, I've been asking all the questions and I haven't, I haven't been in, I haven't been engaged in a conversation where I suspected it would be costs for the Wonders pilot. So magnetic pilot is, you know, is a proposed cost. The, you know, the committee's invested, both of these, both of these programs are, you know, we're very close with, we're their top two choices. With this pilot, the materials we receive are ours to keep. So it comes with, and so the things I'm about to describe to you, if you're not sharp, sharp here for ELA programs, the majority of the things that we get in the pilot are materials that you can use with any language arts program. The quotable texts for grades kindergarten through two, leveled readers for grades three through five, phonics, phonics workbooks that happen because, you know, curriculum associates is also the parent company of, of iReady. So the materials that we would receive in this pilot, if, if we don't choose this program going forward, the materials we receive in the pilot would still be a valuable resource for the things that we're doing, you know, small group instruction to break out of things with iReady, et cetera. If we choose this program, the money we spend on the pilot comes off of the final bill for the, for the magnetic program. So you could ask me that 20 minutes ago, but I could have cut it, I could have cut it short. Yeah, so, so that if we, the pilot comes off of that. There's a part of the, so part of this pilot cost will come from stabilization aid. The other part of the program cost will come from our ESSR funds, which were the area that was designated for learning acceleration as practice on grade level, you know, on grade level teaching. And the training for magnetic is closely related to the things that we do in iReady already, that I feel very comfortable that it's, it's going to be unimpressed. If it ends up being, like I said, if it ends up being the program of choice, then it deducts from the, the end cost of the program. I know, you know, hand carries were let a word often, but, you know, I didn't have, I didn't have that information prior to end committee, prior to personnel when you talk about it. I did talk to, you know, I spoke with Lydia as soon as I found out that it was going to be, you know, more cost than, you know, more than free. And I, and I spoke to Lydia, I spoke to, I spoke to Mr. Schultz to talk about the best way. If we do, if we don't go ahead with the hand carry motion tonight and the pilot, pilot process, the way we've envisioned it won't happen and I'd have to repilot, which would allow one staff member per grade level across the district. It's not even one staff member per school, it would be one grade level across, one person across the district. And that, and again, that doesn't even cover my, that doesn't even cover my, my, we're excited.
First of all, awesome that you've had so many staff members that want to do this. I'm so excited that they're that invested. Time is obviously of the essence, right? If we want to implement this in September, are the pilots going to run concurrently?
No, so right now, our proposal is that the, so let's say hopefully the hand carry passes tonight, I take a picture, I sign the PO in my office, I take a picture and send it and he's six in the morning, we should have our materials in hand on Monday or Tuesday. He provided, they provided digital access to resources that our teachers are able to play in. So we did a training yesterday, we trained the pilot group. I had, I had, you know, 32 staff members with, with administrators at the actual school yesterday, other than today, to train the pilot group on how to, on how to step right up. So the proposal for magnetic, so answer your question shortly, no, they won't be concurrent. They, part of it, it's a few. The digital, the district, the district literacy committee will pilot both programs. The additional staff members who volunteered to be pilot participants, group A is going to pilot magnetic and then group B is going to pilot wonders. The proposed timeframe will begin on Monday, March 25th and bring us to the Friday before spring break for the magnetic pilot. And in that time period, because I'm going to have a separate group of participants, I'm going to be trained for the wonders pilot in the week leading up to spring break so that we can be geared for wonders pilot on the Monday after spring break. And I, why, it might be, that might be April 29th. And then that will take us to the, because we have, we do have NJSLA in there, so we kind of accounted for that week. So that will take us to the May, May 12th around time period, leading up to the May 21st board meeting. So it's my intention to have a program voted on and ready to bring to you for committees the week prior to the May 21st board meeting. So hopefully that, if we get an approval and we have a consensus on an appropriate program, you'll be able to go on it on May 21st. I'll be able to sign the purchase order May 22nd and teachers will have, teachers will have their materials, their teacher manuals before they leave for the end of, end of June. One of the things also that we talked about last year, feedback from the math committee, was that we train, we did additional training on that first PD day in September. And, you know, that was, that was a process. So I'm looking at a day in June to, to train with whatever program that we have, put my district literacy committee together to prepare, you know, some, so, you know, do a lot of the, some of the groundwork for, you know, the rest of the staff to, you know, for, for unpacking and recommendations for, you know, because when you get a new program, you get a lot of, you get a lot of things, you get a lot of bells and whistles. And, you know, to get to the, I guess the left and right of the process, the summer committee is going to do a lot of that work so that on our first PD day in September, rather than sticking them all in the high school cafeteria for a day, get all this information throughout them, they'll have that day to go in their classroom, to set up for the implementation of a new program and the second year of math program that's also going to be used. I think it's a good process for, for staff, it's a good process for kids, if I can keep that, if I can keep that timeframe.
It looks like you're talking three weeks for one program and two weeks for the other for the pilot. And those two are mine.
It should be, it should be about three weeks each.
Three weeks each. My question is that will you?
Well, so, let me clarify. So the group A, who, you know, so the, the program participants who, who are not on the district literacy committee, they can go beyond. So they're going to get the materials. So I've already talked, I have some, you know, there's some unknowns in the, in the discussion because we have to get their feedback as we go. If they completely fall in love with this program, I may let that pilot group finish the deal with it. Same thing with the, same thing with the wonders. And many of us believe that these two programs are far head and shoulders above the current program that we have. So if we're bringing in a better program that better meets state standards, then by all means, if they want to continue with that process, we're going to let them do that.
Even if it's not a program that's hit?
Right, because they're both, they're both standard based, they're, they both, you know, address, you know, preparation for entrance and all the things that we do. On the backside of it, we do have, and that's one of the things that I was excited about, having iReady in place, that kind of keeps us safe with always working towards state standards and working towards filling in learning gaps. Part of the process that they completed yesterday, which is ongoing this week, that they are looking at scope and sequence of all the programs to properly identify a starting weight for the pilot, so that it's not just jumping into a strange place, so that it'll be natural for the student's progression and it'll replace content standards and activities that they would have been using in our current program anyway. So it should be seamless in nature. It is my, you know, my plan, again, if the pilot is here to go ahead, that I'm going to write a letter to all K5 families and let them know that we are moving forward with the pilot and I'll prepare an individual letter for each grade level, each classroom that is having a pilot. So we'll let all K5 families know that we're doing a pilot. And then the classroom students' families are going to know that they're, they're getting, you know, they're going to get a little bit of a different, different process, we'll have all of that. And we're going to use, and we're going to use that feedback to families. So, you know, surveys and information from families about what they see with the program, compare and contrast those, those types of things.
I have one more question. Are you going to have a plan for the PD and how, because you're saying you want to do the day at, at school or whatever.
Right.
You're going to have a plan for education committee so that they know they're kind of fine-tuning everybody's on for training because?
So it depends, it depends on calendar, you know, so if there's changes to the calendar, you know, I have a, I have a, I have a date in mind already, that I'm talking to the association leadership just to make sure that, you know, these plans are all.
But we'll get a plan so that we know who's in front of me.
And I can, I can actually, Dr. Kinnear, I can discuss since she can put that plan in her Friday update.
Yep. I have a question. Is the PD cost included in the program? Like if we were to purchase that, is it part of it?
Yes.
Okay.
So the, the total cost of the program includes the professional developer. The, the professional development that is in the pilot can also, is also part of the big picture. So that, you know, so it kind of leads into if this is a program that we, that we.
I have another question. I was doing a little research, Dr. Smith, when I read the hand carry and it was, I looked at a sample of the lesson, I downloaded it and it looks fantastic. But I have one question about the magnetic reading program. It said that it serves as a component to a core reading program.
Right.
So is the core reading program the three to five part of this?
Right.
Okay, and the K12 is the phonics proficiency?
Right.
Okay, thank you. That's what I need to talk about. Thanks.
Just my huge, so we did a, we did a full group training yesterday, future, the trainings that are planned going forward, first planned touch point training with the program participants is going to be the first week of April. So they were training yesterday, they're starting. So they'll begin next week and then within two weeks of use, they're going to meet again and then we're going to break them into K2 groups and 3-5 groups so they can be a little more targeted and specific.
And I guess just one, so the wonders is going to be 4/29 through around now, 5/12? You said May 12?
Right. That would be, so like I said, right now it's open ended because I think that they want to continue for, I'm thinking for the decision process from voting and bringing it to, bringing it to the board, that's the timeframe. So they, the district literacy committee, which I didn't mention yet, they're going to pilot it. So they're more locked into the three weeks and the three weeks, you know, and they're going to be more of the fast five years, they're going to help interview, they're going to help interview the other program participants and compare and contrast and then ultimately help, helping the decision for which, which program we want.
And then you'll have that meeting as a group prior to the board meeting in May?
Yes.
So that you could, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I can bring, I can bring kids at a future board meeting for, for you all to kind of get your hands on, kind of like I did when I brought the Nancy Schultz finders and Cockroft Math finders. I can bring, I can bring magnetic and wonders kids here.
Kids.
Or even if you just wanted to.
How can you say kids?
Kids. I mean, definitely bring the one of your shoes, even if you just don't have one. It's fine, I just.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Another, other topic, I want to bring the board's attention to a little more serious discussion with the legal one training that we began in the district yesterday. We have, and we've talked about it in committees and at the board level, without the district's response to suicide prevention training. Our teachers each year use, you know, global compliance network, there's a module that they, you know, that they're required to do. It's an hour long, it's a, it's a lengthy process, but it's, it's not as in-depth and it's not as targeted as the training that we are engaging in now. So legal one, which works through NJPSA, New Jersey Principles and Supervisors Association, they, they have partnered with the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention and they created a module that's specific for educators and that module is called Signs Matter Early Detection. Our staff are going to complete this, this two-hour module between now and the, and the end of the school year. And that is as a precursor to the in-person training that they're receiving in the fall, which is through the Rutgers Center for Behavioral Health. They come in, they do an hour and a half training and that, our, our staff will, will begin the school year with that next year, it'll be, I haven't worked out next, next year yet, it'll be September for our early dismissed PD day in October, where we have, where we have this intense training. When I, when I emailed this message to staff about what we were doing, I referred to so many of the research, you know, research points that we've been receiving about post-pandemic learning and, you know, some of the trends that you see in terms of self-harm, suicidal ideation and all those types of things. I know locally, we, we, you know, our counselors are very, are very busy. So no time like the present to, to bring this in. Our staff began with yesterday, we had a few, you know, I guess, technology, which is, you know, when you had everybody using their laptop at the same time, they use the same website, it'd go, it doesn't always just go, a little bit, a little bit of buffering types of things. So, you know, everyone creates their own login, they work at their own pace, they're going to have time afforded to them, they'll be at time professional, professional day yesterday. And then we are going to afford time at all of our faculty meetings and department meetings for the remainder of the year to be able to, you know, work on it as they go. Our staff will complete this process for the due period and I have enough licenses for class A's and Dr. Restad and I are discussing how we train our A's in the fall so that they're ready for that in-person, in-person training as well. And then I'll also have enough licenses for your staff.
I have a question. Tell me what grade is this, this one?
I'm sorry?
What grade is this?
This is everybody.
Thank you.
All certified staff.
All certified staff.
All certified staff, everyone, yeah. All certified staff and our class A's.
I have a testimonial, I have nowadays a very thorough, I have other great examples given in the training as well. It's very focused on compliance and also ability as well. So there's a great, it's a great trainer, I thought it was very thorough.
And then, one of the things that I send to staff is that, that we do have a, there's a mandatory requirement for the state of New Jersey. And I sent directly the messages to the staff that this isn't, although it checks a box, it's not about checking a box thing. So that's why we're, that's why we're investing in this, in the process. And we were going to use Ezra funds.
Okay, that is no bad? Good.
Thank you. Mr. Schultz, special report to some correspondents.
Mr. Schultz, special report of some correspondence.
So we have the minutes for the February 20 budget regular meeting and the February 20 executive session meeting.
I got a motion.
I move the February 20 budget regular meeting and executive session meeting minutes.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Are we moving just the 20th, or are we moving more together?
Just the 20th, so all individual. So any opposed? I have a motion.
I'd like to move the February 1st special meeting and executive session meeting minutes.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I leave. Any opposed?
I have a feeling.
Okay, a motion for February 22nd?
I move February 22nd special meeting minutes.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I am staying. I am staying. I have a comment, thank you.
For bringing that up. That was so good. I think it should be a little easier from now on. It's not going to be easy. Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Okay, the president's report. So just a couple of things, I just wanted to give a big shout out to everyone that was involved with Foot Loops. Wow. What an amazing performance. I mean, again, year after year, I'm blown away with what our high school puts out and what their, every year it just seems to get better. And I know that it was well attended, as our representative from the high school said, and again, an amazing performance. So congratulations and great job. And I also just want to plug the Macapin play that is coming next month, James and the Giant Peach, tickets are on sale, so go out and get those tickets. Those are the kids that are coming up, so it's good to see them in their middle school careers before you get to see them in their high school, so. Another thing I want to bring up was the Eagle Scout that came on January 30th, Aiden Simbrick. He got part of his scout project done. The Maple Road Walkway to SAC has been finished and is being used and looks amazing. Mr. Kane reported on his Facebook page, I saw the post, so I just wanted to plug him. He still has a part, part of it to finish, which I think will be coming very soon. I was going to tell everyone about the Antables, which I know we already heard, but I just want to plug it again. It's a fundraiser, and any money that is made on that night, it goes to the local food banks. So I love that they're combining it on the art festival night, hopefully it'll be a little more intended than it has in the past, and it all goes to a good cause. And then just one other update, a notification went out today for a special meeting next week, March 28, at 7:00 PM at the Macapin Cafeteria, and that will be, the new superintendent will be on the agenda for that meeting, so he will be there, so anyone of them would like to come and meet him, and we will be voting on that new appointment. And that concludes my report, and then we'll go to public comments. All speakers will have five minutes to speak until a period of 30 minutes transpires. Before speaking, please state your name, group affiliation, and address for the record. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to meeting will be recognized by the chair first. After speaking, all speakers are asked to sign the register provided and give their full name, group affiliation, and their address. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually. All speakers are expected to have read the statement within the agenda regarding the regulations. Any public comments? And Mr. Schultz, anyone signed up?
Yes, Courtney Stevenson.
Mrs. Stevenson.
Courtney Stevenson, 307 Ridge Road, West Smithville, New Jersey. I stand before you today with a sense of optimism and enthusiasm as you discuss the proposal for a pilot English Language Arts program for the upcoming school year. It is truly heartwarming, stated, and at enhancing the educational experience of our students keeping shape within our district. As we look ahead at the 2024-2025 school year, where new English Language Arts standards are on the horizon, it becomes increasingly imperative that our community experiences as many pilot programs as possible. This ensures that we are well prepared for the challenges, for the changes ahead, and can make informed decisions about the direction of our PLE curriculum. In this regard, I commend the leadership demonstrated by our Director of Education in choosing to partner with Curriculum Associates for this pilot program. Curriculum Associates, as the publishing company for I-Rating, the standardized test operation tool currently being utilized in West Smithville, offer seamless integration that facilitates alignment within our educational framework. I urge each of you to consider the importance of passing this pilot program tonight. As trustees, you bear fiduciary responsibility to your community, but you also have a moral duty to our educators, children, and parents. Allowing our administration the opportunity to pilot this program now is not just prudent, it's critical. With only three and a half short months remaining in the school year, initiating the pilot will afford our teachers, students, and parents valuable time to immerse themselves in the new curriculum, explore its resources, and engage in meaningful discussions. Moreover, it will ensure better alignment with the existing I-Rating program, provide students with academic rigor, essential to their growth, and offer parents a firsthand glimpse into the educational journey of their children. We cannot afford to delay this decision. Time is of the essence. A yes vote tonight is imperative to kickstart our pilot program. Most pilots only run for three months, and with the end of the school year fast approaching, we must act swiftly to seize this opportunity. I am hopeful for this report to make and optimistic about the prospect of witnessing more pilot programs taking place in our township. Embracing change is essential for progress, and as community members, we place our trust in you to be the catalyst for positive transformation. This is where it begins, the seeds of change that will cultivate a greater future for our students and our community. Let us embrace this opportunity wholeheartedly and pave the way for excellence in education. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Stevenson. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Okay. Any of those with public comments?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, any changes to the agenda? Dr. McNair?
Yes, there are two changes. Board members, if you, in case, turn to page number eight, motion number 16. If you look just above motion 16, you'll see motions 14 and 15 concerning the Disseminated Scholars Night and the Community Scholarship Night. Motion number 16 is going to be modified as we are hoping to approve Mr. Jordan as the videographer not only of the Community Scholarship Night, but also the Disseminated Scholars Night.
Oh, so.
Yeah. So we did notice it, but just after the agenda was already released to the board. So for this motion, it's going to read in total, recognition of the interim superintendent to approve just Jordan videographer for the 2024 Community Scholars Night on May 23, 2024, and the 2024 Disseminated Scholars Night on April 18, 2024. At the hourly rate, same hourly rate, $37. And then, so it's, the rest of it reads the same as it did below, but it did insert that second line, we wanted to make sure that's included. The only other change I have is from Mr. Schultz, it's on page 11, and it's for motion number one under Operations and Finance. If you look at the account number under that first motion, the number, if you see about the center, and I'll read the whole number to you, that 6-0 is in the center, should be 6-10, 6-1-0, so the number will read 11-190-100-610-1000. And those are the only two changes I have.
Thank you, Dr. McNair. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented? I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented with the two changes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this is why it's not here today, someone asked Mrs. Jerkison if you can take over education, please. Okay, I'd like to move, sorry, I'd like to move items one through nine. Can I include the other? One through nine under education. Second. Any discussion?
Yes.
I have a question down about number five, the boys' track field. It says here that there's going to be the two, I see there's two gentlemen that are on here, and then for the girl, I see the one woman. If there are going to be anything other females on the trip, because it's a two-day trip.
Okay, so the motion, yeah.
Aye.
It has a date.
Right, so it's a two-day trip, and we're 12, and I don't have, it says eight to 12 students are gone. That's quite a, because the whole girl's packing. And I don't know, maybe I'm questioning something that I shouldn't, but I'm thinking back, I'm just thinking back, it says all, so I was just curious, and I understand why there's two men, but...
Well, I think prior there was no female at all, if I'm correct. Yeah. No, on the prior trip, that was, so we spoke to in the past, but this one does have a female chaperone.
For the four.
Okay. And is there any standard called to, there is a female chaperone going on the trip, so...
Mrs. Platchock is on the trip.
She's the odd one.
Yeah. We caught her.
Okay, anyone else? So I go, Dr. McNair, you just wanted to give a little backstory to number one.
Yes, so we understand that the April board meeting is the end of the month, and rather than leave the community and school system wondering what we're going to do in case we have any inclement weather days that, however, that's going to contribute, the committee thought it would be a good idea to re-languish at the bottom of this year's calendar and next year's calendar, the appropriate dates, that kind of explains how that's going to look, and I'm going to just read that to you now, so that people understand why we're voting again on this calendar. The notation at the end comes in three parts, and it says, number one, 187 days for students, 191 days for staff. Number two, six emergency closing days are included. Unused emergency closing days will be given back to shorten the school year, starting with June 25, 2024. If more than the allotted emergency closing days are needed, early dismissal days will be added to the end of the school year. Number three reads, if emergency closing days are not used by April 5, 2024, they will be applied in the following order, June 25, June 24, June 21, June 20, and June 19, and finally June 18. Now, as we know, we've already used two of the six days during this school year, so the four remaining days then will be applied to the end of the school year, we don't use them, of course, this morning I saw snowflakes on the way to work, so I'm standing a little nervous. So, but in this way, we hope to give families the opportunity, both our staff and our parents, opportunity to plant ahead, and we know that we have four days left unused at the moment, and if that remains the same, then our end date will be adjusted for you.
Thank you, Dr. McNair. Any other discussion?
Okay, seeing not local, Mr. Schultz.
Mrs. Jerkison?
Yes.
Mr. Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mander?
Yes.
Mr. Lippie?
Yes.
Mrs. Loughlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dijk personnel?
I'd like to move items one through 29, which is the three motions of the year.
Second.
Okay, I know there's probably going to be some discussion on this, but I just wanted to start it out and just recognize that one, two, three, and four, the retirees that are up here, and just give everyone the amount of years that they've been in this district. So Dr. McLaughlin, 20 years. Mrs. Baldini Doyle, I know it's Mrs. Baldini, but she's been here 29 years. Ms. Perry, 23, and Ms. Whitman, 25 years. You know, and you never want to see retirees that have been in this district and given so much of their time, but you'll leave, but you also, they've put in their time, and they deserve to enjoy their retirement. Just want to thank you all for everything that you've done for this district, and enjoy your free time. Anyone else wishing to say anything or discuss?
I just, I reiterate what you said, and I just, I'm very sad to see Dr. McLaughlin go, and he has, just transformed our music program here, and he will surely be missed, but our program is played number one, and I think we did that, and I do know that his trainee who's coming next, and I'm very bad with word, but I wish him well in his future. But I do remember when he first came, and I have to say, he was tremendous, because he's been, he's been a hero asset for our district, and we're going to miss him. A little bit of the other three teachers, I feel, you know, we keep losing these good people, but I guess everybody earns their way through soccer, so we said well to him. Thank you.
And those surely have some needs to follow, yes?
Yes.
Anyone else that need discussion?
I'll agree, I mean, I don't know that younger elementary teachers were in this school year, you will be very much missed, and thank you for everything that you've done. And Dr. McLaughlin, man, my kids just getting out of school, so I was really disappointed. However, as a great parent, I did attend the theme announcement for next year's camp, and I was absolutely blown away, so I know that he's leaving us in very good hands, and I know that as committed as he is, he wouldn't leave us if we weren't in great hands. So the theme is amazing, you should check out the video on YouTube, it is so exciting, and to hear the kids scream, and it was just, it was awesome. So the end is really cool, and I'm going to miss Dr. McLaughlin and not have the opportunity to ban him anytime I'm with staff, but I'm very excited for all of them, so I do hope that, thank you.
Anyone else? Please, not all, please, Mr. Schultz.
Mrs. Seibert?
I've seen on 20 and 21, and yes, the list.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mrs. Jerkison?
Yes.
Mrs. Khan?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Lippie?
Yes.
Mrs. Loughlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Lippie, Operations and Finance?
Operations and Finance, I'd like to move for vote number one through seven.
Any discussion?
I'll say thank you to Mrs. Jerkison for her hockey table and her basketball game for her, that's awesome. I've seen a lot of schools even in a regular high school, the students have their own games like that, and Xboxes, and it's just something now to build community, and have those things together, rather than the kids just always be on their device on their own, to have those things that they can do together. So thank you for those donations, that's very cool and exciting.
And for us, I've seen non-roll, please, Mr. Schultz.
Mr. Lippie?
Yes.
Mr. Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Jerkison?
Yes.
Mr. Sidewitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mrs. Lottler?
Yes.
Okay, move motion number eight under operations and finance.
Second.
Any discussion? Non-roll call, please, Mr. Schultz.
Mr. Lippie?
Yes.
Mr. Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Jerkison?
Yes.
Mr. Sidewitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Thank you.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
I'm standing by.
Mrs. Lottler?
Yes.
Okay, finish it up, operations and finance. I'd like to move number nine through number 12.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please, Mr. Schultz.
Mr. Lippie?
Yes.
Mr. Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Jerkison?
Yes.
Mr. Sidewitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mrs. Lottler?
Yes.
Mr. Sidewitz, policy.
Under policy, I'd like to move items one through 15.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing non-roll call, please, Mr. Schultz.
Mr. Sidewitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Jerkison?
Yes.
Mr. Khan?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mr. Lippie?
Yes.
Mrs. Lottler?
Yes.
Okay, committee reports. Mrs. Dwyer is not here, but part of some rep, I don't think anyone else has attended. Let's. So safety, Mrs. Khan.
I can't remember if we reported on the safety meeting last time, but we had a safety meeting. I think it was that day. Yeah. Okay, all right. No report. It's okay, I just got to be saying we have safety meeting today.
And any, Mrs. Khan, person superintendent?
So I do have a superintendent's roundtable. We had a great superintendent's roundtable led by Mr. Novak. The main topic of discussion was the new math re-rubing in Macapin. A lot of the members of the superintendent roundtable had questions regarding what that's actually going to look like and how it's going to work, especially with students already existing in Macapin. So Mr. Novak was actually the perfect person to be there at the meeting because he had all the information. And it does sound like it's going to be a fairly seamless transition for those kids. He'll tell me that we were looking to get some more clarity on this. There will be a cohort of eighth graders moving to the high school for geometry. And they just wanted to know a little bit more about the logistics of how that was going to work. Another hot topic was with, you know, our budget coming out, they were asking if the 4:30 late bus could be reinstated. And I think we were going to talk to Mr. Schultz to see what that was, what was feasible with that. They also were questioning some of the late bus routes. Apparently, there are some kids who live in Creston Park, and they're obviously buses kids, you know, losting. So it's like a lot of time on the bus, and interested, it seems to make sense to them at the moment. So we're going to always check on the sanity of those routes. Otherwise, it was a meeting, well attended, and thanks, Mr. Novak, for the input.
Claire, can you come ask the question?
Yeah.
Would it be okay to put late buses on as an agenda item for operations and finance, please?
Sure.
If I may ask some questions and then later discuss, is it okay?
Okay. If you have any questions, sort of, to Mrs. Talbot, before I do, so I can get some information beforehand.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Khan. Passaic County Schoolboys Association, that was me. And Mrs. Van Dyke attended with me last week. It was the Unsum Hero Awards, a great night honoring all those students that often go unnoticed. And of course, Michael McCloskey, who was here for what would be in, two, yeah, two meetings ago, it seemed like that long, was there, received his award. It's just a wonderful night, my second year attending. And I encourage anyone that wants to attend next year. It's just, it's just a great feeling to see all these students, you know, get up and get these awards and to hear what they've accomplished. And they would have really have gone unnoticed in their district. And it's just a really wonderful night. The next meeting for Passaic County is on May 29th, and that would be the last meeting of this school year. And that's it for Passaic County Schoolboys. If you wanted to add anything, Mrs. Van Dyke?
It was a great night, it was wonderful seeing, and it was very moving hearing some of the speeches that the top counselors gave or the principal gave, and why they chose these students for the award. Also, Mr. Novak and Mr. Schreins were with us, and it was, you know, my parents were there. And we definitely enjoyed the night, and it definitely is worth being at. It's a nice recognition for some students who normally would not get that recognition.
And Miss Lambert, yeah, she, I believe she sent us all the video of the night. I encouraged everyone to watch it, it really did.
She did a wonderful job, it was, yeah.
We are at the very end, it was a good hour.
We were at the end, they showed us, you can do a heads up if you want. We're just going, just going for a while, and we're at the very end of that meeting, so. But, yeah, no, and yeah, we sent her to a wonderful job, what she spoke of, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Sidewitz, NJ Schoolboys.
Thank you. On March 20th, from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m., on SUGO, which is the conference app that NJSCA uses, there will be trainings for the governor's two, guardians three, and guardians four. On Thursday, March 28th, from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m., there's a webinar series that is entitled Revolutionized Learning: Set Into the Era of Immersive Experiences. And also, on April 11th, from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m., there's leveraging state and federal dollars to establish a long-term, high-impact tutoring program. So both those programs are on Thursday, and I imagine that most people are visiting between 1:00 and 2:00 p.m. on Thursday, but those are available for viewing afterwards. And that's the NJSCA report. And I'm just going to jump right into the next place, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
So I don't really like to report on anything unless it's about the governor's test. But oh, note, was on the 14th of March, the Senate Education Committee heard testimony from inviting guests across the spectrum of PK, the 12th grade community. And it was a range of different school funding circumstances. And basically, the importance of this is there is seemingly going to be a restructuring of the funding formula there. If you recall my 20-minute diatribe from last year, I did mention how long it took to get to the point of the funding formula, which is short of almost three decades. So hopefully, it doesn't take that long. I think that this would be more expeditious and hopefully more thoughtful in judicial sense, so it could just become a new part of our law. I do applaud that the funding formula was fully funded for the first time in its history. Unfortunately, the impacts to us were not so good. So I'll keep you updated on that, and that's my report.
Thank you. Mrs. Lippie, technology oversight.
This is short here. I know there was a meeting, I was not available for the meeting, and as a part, it has no time that she will share. Hopefully, next time.
Thank you. I think I actually should share that already, unless there was a wide sense then.
It was a scene that is lost.
Yeah. Unless it's been, so.
So there'll be a meeting in the future soon.
So the TANCAI Board of Education Joint Committee, I don't think there's anything to report because we haven't had a meeting, right? So maybe we could follow up with, Mr. Schultz, to see, it's been a while. The Westmoreford Municipal Alliance, Mrs. Jerkison.
So I joined the Zoom, and I had a little technical difficulty because it got cut off. It was like COVID PTSD for me, it's a 230. So I can tell you that the pickleball tournament is happening April 13th. There was a lot of discussion about the logistics of Scott's fun run, and I don't have a date off the top of my head, since I didn't write it down, I apologize, but I'll contact you for the next meeting. But that will be happening again, and that's right? Pickleball.
Pickleball.
April 13th, don't forget.
And they always seem to have technical difficulties when they're Zoom for any meetings that I have.
I don't know what they need, or what, like, it was just like, oh, oh.
You know, Zoom again, yeah. Special Education Parent Advisory Committee, me and Miss Markport did go to the meeting last week on the 13th. I'll just touch on some of the bullet points that was on the agenda. So there was a great presentation given by our district VCDI, Miss Anall, on behavioral management strategies. Great slides, great back and forth conversation with the parents, she did a wonderful job. There was some discussion on the PD from February 20th and March 18th. Dr. Resri gave an update on that, the real-time updates for the IEP. Spoke of the, spoken reference to the Westmoreford School District Week of Inclusion. And the feedback from the parents in that room was amazing, they loved it, as I think everyone did, and are nothing but wonderful things about that week. There was an update of some of the special education programs that are being looked at for the fall. The Education Foundation is requesting to visit on May 15th. I believe that date may be looked at and possibly changed. Looks like there's a conflict, what a surprise, in the year that always seems to be conflicts. So that may not be the date of the next meeting that could be changed. Resources were given to the parents. And then Miss Babcock, the CPAC check person, had her agenda items. There was some discussion about the sensory reading program. ESY was discussed and dates were given. The FENSAPK, and Dr. Reza updated them on that. Hopefully, that will be coming prior to the new school year, is the hope. So stabilization aid was discussed, that will be hopefully being used for that FENSAPK. Staff emails, the NJ4S was discussed in more detail. There was discussion on transitioning and IEPs and just on the brochure for the special programs, I think, which is in the works. So it was a great meeting, it was over two hours long, it was pretty long. Didn't seem that long though, which was nice. And again, the May 15th, that date may have to change for the next meeting. So stay tuned for that date. And that includes the CPAC. So any old business. Mrs. Van Dyke?
I just wanted to mention that I was able to visit all the schools for reading across America. It was just wonderful. I got to go in at least two classrooms in every building. And the welcoming, the welcome that I got from the kids and from the staff was just wonderful in every building, and it felt so great to be back in the buildings again. And you could tell that the staff and the kids really enjoyed seeing guest graders come. So I'm hoping that I can go back again this school year yet, but I thoroughly enjoyed it. And if everybody, whoever got a chance to do it, it definitely is on the top of your list as a board member. When you sit there and you see, you get a really good firsthand look at what's going on in the classroom. And we have a lot, we have a lot of good things happening in our buildings, and I hope everybody gets a chance to see them. It was a pleasure to be in the buildings, thank you.
I'd love to add that the students were incredibly deep, and I spent so much time with each other. They were so well behaved. I've done it before, every single class I was in was just, I told them, I think you're the best students in the state of New Jersey. So I think we, I think we have a lot to brag about.
Yeah, definitely.
But I enjoyed it as well, I went in, and for me to walk into a classroom all by six foot four and, um, it kind of looked up like, you know, who is this guy? But it was, it was very just, like, really loud, like, we certainly, those one.
I will say I was asked for an autograph by Mrs. Rodeck's class at that class.
I just got home, so I'm not. It was a very, very busy, but great.
Any other old business?
Okay.
Move to close old business.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? New business?
I have some new business.
Okay, Mrs. Romeo?
First, I was talking to Dr. Reza earlier and Mrs. Jerkison about reading. And one of the things that I presented in one of the classrooms was an app called the Libby App. And I just wanted to tell you all about it because what we do here is for education and for our students. And what we talked about, what journey of tonight, what Mrs. Novak talked about, is our ELA program. So the Libby App, L-I-B-B-Y, directly connects you to our Westmoreford Township Library. And you put in your library card, and you can download, read, not to anything, an audiobook. You can put on hold the books that they have at the library, or you can also take them out and have them read on your computer immediately. And I'll tell you, the students in fourth grade were like, you know, oh my gosh, like, that, you know. So I did, it was just really cool, but also I think everybody should know the resources and the things that we have. And so I was able to play the first few minutes of my little book from the app so they could hear it and see what it does, and it's right here, you know. So if you don't have a library card, so I just wanted to share that with all of you, too, because I saw Dr. Resly would get upgraded with any, if you have a huge work at all, you could listen to books back and forth, it's wonderful, so I wanted to share that. However, two of their big business items, and they're really just thank yous because I don't know that we acknowledge enough the people that think before us. And so I want to thank Mr. Kane because the principle of Maple Grove. I know honestly, without ever talking to you in person, more about what's going on at Maple Grove than any other school in the district. And I think every board member agrees with me, and I appreciate that. I love knowing what they're wearing for inclusion fees. And I love getting your emails and your newsletters and your updates. And you provide us, you provide me with the most information, and I think the board would agree than any other thing, and really like, just knowing, you know, knowing what's happening in your building. And oh, that must be exciting for kids, I'm thinking about it and seeing what you're doing. So thank you for sharing that with us, always.
See, I thought it was just me, it doesn't seem that.
I don't have to laugh because every time my phone goes off, it's 9:00 o'clock. I says, bill must be done, so I would laugh, but I totally agree with you. Because if we, I wish there was a way that we could get everything from all of the schools. And we have, if we get it and we choose not to look at it, that would be fine, but it is great. I always think I'm dedicating it because I'm grandma, but that might be.
I'm just a crock over chairs.
I have, that's okay, I have it. I will say, I can't, we get all of them, and we can choose to get them sent to our phones or text. Macapin always reads, which is wonderful, because I also, as a parent, I sometimes have to decipher who's writing. So are we talking Maple Grove or Macapin, or is this anything else? So it's nice when the principal puts, write at the first one, because if you are a parent that has kids in multiple buildings, or if you are a board member, you get those from different schools. And so you sometimes have to be like, all right, wait, this is Mr. Kane for sure, or this is Macapin. So it's good, Macapin always raises at the end, Macapin the school, and then the announcement.
Yeah.
Right? So just aside, you know, the principals and administration might not even know what we seek, you know. But thank you for that. And the second person that I want to thank, and I thought about before when someone brought her up. And the second person that I want to thank, and I thought about before when someone brought her up being an unsung hero, is Deanna Labor at the high school. I am so grateful for the guidance newsletter. And if you have any high school students in your life or really anyone that wants to go to college but still a student, you should be looking at her newsletter. There are scholarships all the time, not just for high school juniors and seniors. So your eighth graders, your freshmen, sometimes there's SACB writing and hitting in. There's nothing more frustrating. And I can tell you, she's been working in the guidance department for 24 years. And when it's embarrassing, when someone says, well, we only had two applications for your scholarship, sorry. Like here, you know, we're not, our students are not always applying, even for the ones that have it. You know, but so thank you to Miss Labor for sharing that newsletter with us and for making it so great. And whoever else in the guidance department is doing it, I just know we get an email from her. And it's really, really good. It's tremendous, yes, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Romeo. Anyone else made new business?
Move to close new business?
Go ahead.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Got to get her up to this.
And our second public comment, so all speakers. All speakers will have five minutes to speak until a period of 30 minutes transpires. Before speaking, please state your name, group affiliation, and address for the record. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. After speaking, all speakers are asked to sign the register provided and give their full name, group affiliation, and then address. All statements shall be directed to presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually. All speakers are expected to have read the statement within the agenda regarding the regulations concerning public comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Mrs. Schultz, anyone signed up?
No, there's not.
Anyone wishing to speak? Okay. Miss Babcock?
I'll save my names. Yep.
Don't press that little person.
Is it red? It's green. You know, it's red, okay. Caitlin Babcock, 13, host place. I just had a comment about the calendar. So right now, if we don't have any more days, it'll end on the 20th. Right now, but the 19th, okay, the 19th, whichever. But right now, the 19th is a full day. But the, I know with our teacher's contract, the last three days have to be half days. Yes. So is that something considerate, putting that on the calendar? Just making that note, that the last three days, no matter what it is, would be half days just for planning purposes?
Well, and this isn't the only way that we're going to communicate whatever happens. Or whatever else, yeah. There'll be messages that go out.
Okay, but actually, just for us, like, absolutely. Just something like in the future also, like, because if there are always going to be, the last three days are always going to be half days because it's contracted. It might be something just for planning purposes for parents just to know, like, okay, yeah, we're moving it up, but those three days are also half days, just so the parents know because it is a big jump. Yep. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Babcock. Anyone else wishing to speak? Oh. Mr. Bedford. I almost called your name. Miss, sorry.
The red light.
In case anybody doesn't know, my name is Nathan Bedford or people calling me Nate or the video guy at Westmofford. I'm the one that usually does all the live streaming. I'm also involved with Westmofford 77, the television station here in town. And I'm also involved with the Friends of Oompah Iron Works. I just wanted to make a little announcement that for the public and for the board that this is the 40th anniversary of the Friends of Oompah Iron Works. The Oompah Iron Works is a state park located at 1334 Grand Lake Turnpike in New Jersey. It is the birthplace and cradle of Westmofford. We are going to have our spring cleanup day on Saturday, March 30th at 10 o'clock, both in the museum and on site for anybody who's interested in helping to get the place ready for the season, which starts on Saturday, April 13th. And I also do Civil War reenacting and that Civil War weekend is scheduled for June 8th and 9th. But I will keep everybody posted on that. But I just wanted to come up here and make an announcement for Hans Niederschreizer, who is our president. And I hope you all will keep the history alive.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Move to close public comments?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so there is no need for any executive session?
Stop it.
Do you want one?
No, I don't know how to do this now.
What do we do?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And it's 8:36.